The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and the Local Redevelopment Authority Meetings are called to order. Today is Tuesday, February 24th, 2015. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise. And may I have the scout leader, leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the visible will liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Please remain standing. Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, thank you for this wonderful day that you've provided for us. We come to you tonight, Heavenly Father, with praise and worship on our minds and in our hearts. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we have a council, a staff, and people in Riverbank that want to see this community succeed in all ways. And we just ask tonight, Heavenly Father, that you bless this council. Bless them as they make decisions that concerns each citizen here. Lead them, Heavenly Father. Give them the strength, the ability, and the wisdom that they make those decisions, knowing, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we only have one person that we really look to, and that's you. And Heavenly Father, we just ask tonight that you bless them. Be with each person here. Bless each individual. Bless our servicemen, Heavenly Father, each mother's son, each father's daughter, wherever they are tonight. Lift them up, and we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barber Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Any council or authority member or staff who have direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll start off with presentations. And at first, if I may, call up Alana Clayton. Please. For those of you who don't know, Alana just opened up her business about nine weeks ago.
About, well, September.
September, okay. That makes it five months ago.[410.21][410.21](laughter) That's probably a little bit more than nine weeks. And it's right across the street. It's Farmers', and it's a beautiful building. And if you have any needs, please see her. But from the City of Riverbank, where this is a certificate of special recognition, Farmers' Insurance, Alana Clayton's office, congratulations on the purchase of your new building and for 18 years of business in Riverbank. On behalf of the city council, welcome to the downtown Riverbank. Alana, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you have to face him, he always wants to take a picture. You have to open up the... There you go. Got it?
Excuse me?
Good.
I don't think I was smiling right.
Okay.
(laughter)
There we go.
Can I just say a couple of things?
Yes, no, I'm inviting you to say a couple of words.
Okay.
Oh, you can say to the...
I just want everybody to know, I'm so happy to be in Riverbank. I love this town, and I'm going to grow old in this town. So, if you need anything, I'm just right across the street, and I'm just so happy to be here. So, thank you. Thank you for this.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. For the second one, we have Deputy Jay Bennett. And I think I'll have you start it off. You're so eloquent because you know him for the last... Since what was it, 1978?
Well, since I started at the Sheriff's Department, but I started working out in Riverbank in 2007. And Jay has... He started his career with Riverbank Police Services. Actually, you were an explorer with the Sheriff's Department prior to that, but you started your full-time career in 1978. Sorry? That's good?
Get closer.
Then I'll get out of the way. In 1978 with Riverbank Police Services. And then when Riverbank started contracting with the Sheriff's Department in 95, you transitioned to Deputy Sheriff, and you've been working for Riverbank Police Services ever since. So, I would like to add that Jay is one of those people that you can literally set your watch to. Law enforcement is full of dependable... inherently dependable people, but Jay sets the bar when it comes to that. Always reports to work early. You know, he would frequently make even me look bad. I would show up maybe, you know, 20 minutes early, thinking I had my stuff together, and Jay was already there and suited up and ready to go. So, and that was pretty routine. In fact, if he ever... If it ever got down to 10 minutes before he was supposed to be there, I would get nervous. You know, but, you know, his idea of a vacation is to go ahead and take time off to go ahead and harvest amens. Amens, not almonds, correct?
Do hammonds still shake the air out of them?
And to do other work and to contribute, you know, to society some other way, other than his day-in-and-day-out job, working for the Sheriff's Department. But he's set an example for generations, which I think is vitally important. And he's been a wealth of knowledge when it comes to Riverbank. So, long established and well-respected by the community. You know, he's had a lot of contacts, written a lot of tickets, made a lot of arrests through the years, and he's just, you know, despite all that, he seems to be liked by everybody he comes in contact with. So, I don't know how you pull it off, but thank you very much. So, if I could read... We're going to be presenting him with a retirement plaque. His official retirement date is March 20th, but I wanted to make sure that we looped him into this, and I appreciate the, you know, the forum to go ahead and recognize him here. But the plaque says... I'm going to keep it covered, so I don't get my paw prints all over it. Deputy Jay Bennett, in recognition of a lifetime of loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of Riverbank and Stanislaus County. Stanislaus County has never known a more reliable and trustworthy peace officer. Congratulations on your much-deserved retirement, and may you now enjoy the same peace and comfort that you have afforded others during your career. Riverbank Police Department, 10-278 to 8-1595. Stanislaus Sheriff's Department, 8-1595 to 3-2015. Congratulations. (applause)
You have to acknowledge... You have a standing ovation, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The city council in the City of Riverbank truly appreciates the services that are provided by the Sheriff's Department through the Riverbank Police Services. And so, you've been a mainstay for the last 20 years? How long was it?
Thirty-six-plus years.
No, no, I mean through the Riverbank...
Yes.
Yeah, 20 years. So, we truly appreciate your dedication and your service. And this is a certificate of appreciation. It should be of considerable appreciation, presented to you, sir, in recognition of your dedication and significant contributions to the Riverbank community, made over 37 years of combined service of the Riverbank Police Services and Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department. Congratulations, sir, on your retirement. Signed, the entire city council. And, sir, we truly appreciate it. Now, you get to say whatever you want without repercussions.
I've still got to go to the 20th of next month, so I've got to be good. Now, one thing I did, I appreciated the fact that back in '78, the City of Riverbank hired me as a law enforcement officer. I learned a great deal here with the administration that we've had throughout the years, from the city council members, city staff, as well as the police department, and then eventually with the Sheriff's Department. I've worked with a lot of different officers, a lot of different supervisors, and Lieutenant Kylie and Sheriff Christiansen are two of the top, in my opinion. This... I think this town is very fortunate to have them here and to be watching after us and guiding us. First thing in my retirement I plan on doing is taking a week off and doing nothing.[796.69][796.69](laughter) Thank you very much.
Shall I stay up?
One more? Oh, yeah.
No, no. He's just the next presentation.
All right. And for those of you who did not recognize Sheriff Adam Christiansen, he's in the back there, so there he is. So, he's here to make sure that Chief Kylie behaves, yeah.[823.12][823.12](laughter) Okay. Item 1.3, introduction to Nextdoor.com to promote citywide information sharing.
Thank you. I just want to preface this with a little bit of history. In 2013, when I came onboard as the interim chief, I was... I picked up the task of establishing neighborhood watches. That was part of the strategic objectives at that time. And in so doing, we held neighborhood watch meetings. Some of them were very successful, some of them were not as successful. And... But the largest obstacle for doing that, what I found was, turned out to be just getting everybody there at the same place and time, physically there. People are busy living their lives, running kids to soccer practice, grocery shopping after work, you know, all of the daily tasks that we all engage in make it very difficult to get, you know, 20 people together the same date and time. A council meeting can be an example of that, you know, getting people to a council meeting, a date and time that works for everyone can be a very challenging thing. Well, neighborhood watch meetings are no different. So, the idea was, the last series of strategic planning was, you know, how do we mitigate that? How do we work our way around that, where we can get citywide involvement? So, one of the objectives that we set was to present a report regarding a community watch link utilized to increase the sharing of information amongst residences and businesses citywide regarding crime. So, with that, I started researching some different mediums that were out there. Patterson Police Services was actually... They were basically made the maiden voyage as far as our agency goes. They had some positive feedback, and we opted to go ahead and partner with Nextdoor for these reasons. Basically, they're a free social network to agencies such as RPS and residents. They have a proven, successful history of partnering with other agencies in over 400 U.S. cities. Those include large metropolitan areas, Portland, LA, San Jose, Sacramento, agencies such as those. It's a private... It's a private network, and it has HTTPS encrypted security. So, there's a lot of comfort knowing that your information's not going to be broadcast, you know, throughout the Internet. It's designed to connect public agencies, residents, and neighborhoods. It uses verification when it comes to residents and other users, and it also has communication options for users with control or audience reach, individual-to-individual, agency-to-neighborhood, or individual-to-neighborhood, or individual, neighborhood-to-neighborhood. There are also a lot of options that the user has, where if somebody's on there and they're being extremely negative and not... Maybe not being productive for the good of the group, you know, members can mute that person, so they can tailor it to their... Whatever they want it to be, for the most part. Does not share information with third-party sources, such as marketing groups. I know that's a huge concern, where, you know, a medium can be turned into nothing more than a marketing opportunity for businesses, and it tends to drown out the communication that people want in terms of neighborhood issues. So, or at least that potential exists. How it works, RPS accesses a custom interface to post a message to specific or very neighborhoods, even all neighborhoods, so we can access a specific neighborhood or broadcast something citywide. Residents see RPS posts on their Nextdoor website or mobile app, as well as through email. They can reply to those posts or send a private message to RPS, creating two-way engagement. RPS informational posts or urgent alerts reach residents through email, push notification and text message, which is a... It's a huge positive attribute to using Nextdoor, is the fact that people can... They can be on the go. They can either be at home, you know, enjoying leisure time, or not so much leisure time, or on their smartphone, and they can have that communication, that continuity, regardless of where they're at. RPS is not exposed to all content. For the most part, your neighbor-to-neighbor communication is secure. Only direct replies with RPS... To RPS posts and private messages to RPS are basically for our eyes, limiting RPS need to monitor all activity and eliminating Big Brother-type concerns for residents. I know that, you know, quite often, people, they want to engage in open dialogue, but they don't always want us looking over their shoulder. It's entirely understandable. We want to, you know, we want to have that free flow of communication, have it be uninhibited by us, but when people have the need to go and communicate something directly to us, they can reply directly to us, and then we see that dialogue. RPS utilizes Nextdoor to inform residents about neighborhood crime trends or issues, help solve cases by networking to identify suspects, suspect vehicles, victims recovered property, et cetera, advise residents on how to access recent crime statistics in their neighborhood. I know we recently did a posting where we talked about our... The crime mapping that we have that's accessed through our Sheriff's Department website, and it's a great tool for people to see what's going on in their neighborhood crime-wise. It's very timely. Usually, the reports are all downloaded within 24, 48 hours, and people can get a very good grasp on what criminal activity's been occurring, not just in their neighborhood, but citywide. So, it's... Crime mapping is a good enough resource to where we... Our detectives actually use it. Sergeants use it to try to decide, you know, what activities they want to focus on as far as directed patrol, and detectives actually use it to see what crime trends are going on as well. So, we use it to correct misinformation. I know that there's... There have been some postings that... Where people were confused, and it provides us the opportunity to clarify the matter, and not just with that individual, but also share that clarification with the community. So, and it may just be a neighborhood problem where we can communicate with that neighborhood directly, or we can... It may be a citywide issue that needs to be communicated. Increased participation at community meetings, increased recruitment of volunteers, such as Stars and Explorers, broadcast emergency alerts and crime prevention tips. I know we had... This was last week, we had the... Actually, I think it was the week before now. We had the sheriff's helicopter that was doing some training, and they were using Galaxy as a landmark, and they were requiring the people that they were working with to locate it and do some other things. Well, it started to buzz, where people were curious what was going on, and they actually called Riverbank Police Services, and after three phone calls, I got on Nextdoor and basically said, you know, that we're conducting training, there's no critical incident going on. And once we pushed that information out, we didn't get a single other phone call, and I think we had 17... We had multiple responses where people were thanking us for putting, you know, pushing the information out there. So, it's... It can be used for all different types of notifications, but facilitate and encourage communication amongst RPS residents and neighborhoods with the ultimate goal of more efficient citywide crime prevention, detection, and ultimately, reduction. We are going to be... We've always been dependent upon good, timely, effective communication with our residents, but we are going to be even more so with Prop 47 and realignment, and we have a lot of folks that were in custody that are out now, and unfortunately, a lot of, you know, they're doing a lot of the same things that they were before, and we are going to be heavily dependent upon communication with our community to get these people back in custody when they're breaking the law. So, Nextdoor is another medium to achieve that. Nextdoor should not be used for, I thought it was important to cover these things as well, formally reporting a crime or suspicious activity. And we encourage people to use traditional dispatch. That way, that call gets entered, and it doesn't go away until we address it, until a deputy responds and we address it. Or people have the option of making online reports and some other meeting with a CSO and reporting it that way as well, but bottom line is it gets addressed. Emergency or urgent matters, requesting extra patrol, and other matters that require a deputy sheriff respond. Now, I made a notation at the bottom. RPS will make an effort to check Nextdoor posts daily. However, due to fluctuations in staff availability and workload, communication may be intermittent at times. So, time-sensitive public safety matters should always be communicated to emergency dispatch. What we've found is that, you know, no matter... We just don't have the ability to monitor it 24/7, 365. So, if somebody has something urgent, we do not want them to use Nextdoor as a means to go ahead and push that information out to us. We want people to call dispatch. So, it can't be... I don't think it can be overemphasized. How to join Nextdoor, of course, for free in parentheses, because everybody likes free. Visit Nextdoor.com, enter your email, street address. You can later opt to hide your numeric address if you want, and zip code, and then click to get started. If you receive an invitation to join Nextdoor, follow the link on it to create your account. Now, how that happens is there are things called neighborhood leads, people that basically take the initiative to get... Sign up for Nextdoor, and they can opt to be a neighborhood lead, and what they will do is they will verify that a particular person is a resident in that neighborhood, and they can also send invitations to that person to join. So, if your neighborhood is already formed, you will be directed to it. If not, you'll be given the option to create one. We do have... I don't want to burn anybody, but I think the mayor's neighborhood, I don't know if you're signed up yet or not.[1477.41][1477.41](laughter)
We have three Facebooks on.
Yes, you do. Yes, very active in Facebook, so...
She took me on.[1489.33][1489.33](laughter)
You'll be asked for address verification. They do not accept PO boxes because they want to make sure that there's an actual residential there. Using one of the following: mobile or landline, Lexus Nexus, which compares email address to residential address using public records, a neighborhood lead verifying you live in the neighborhood, neighborhood invitations, a postcard sent by Nextdoor to your address. The postcard has a unique code, which is then entered by the resident. So, I will say, that's probably my, as far as a personal preference, that's the best method, in my opinion. It's very secure. You know, they... You contact them, they mail it to your physical address, so they are verifying... You're able to confirm that there is a resident in the neighborhood there, and then you use that code, you type it in, and join that way, and it's just a good, secure way to go about it. After that, you'll see that credit card, debit card, or social security number are ways to join. We do not recommend those three, because we are the eternal skeptics and extremely paranoid, and it's just one more opportunity to be compromised. I don't challenge or question the integrity of Nextdoor, but anytime you use a credit card or debit card in a transaction, and it doesn't matter what it's regarding, you are always at the mercy of the person on the end of that that's actually, you know, completing that transaction. So, it's just one more opportunity that you... For compromise, you may not need to take. Managing your privacy. In regards to using Nextdoor, there are many privacy-related questions and concerns, and rightfully so. Please refer to Nextdoor's Help Center under managing your privacy for answers to your questions, as well as tips and usage practices that help achieve a level of privacy you want. I just made reference to it because it goes on and on and on. I mean, there's just a... There's a wealth of knowledge, and the easiest thing to do is just refer to people to the Help page if they have particular questions. What about businesses? Nextdoor states on their website that, in the future, Nextdoor may support organizational accounts that will allow people to join Nextdoor representing a business or an organization. Until then, it's just for neighbors. Now, when I first undertook this, or I was... I really wanted to see this strategic objective through and see it successful with all elements, but their reluctance... Nextdoor's reluctance goes back to the marketing aspect. They don't want it... They don't want it to be, you know, all the residential neighborhood dialogue to be overridden by marketing. So, they're very cognizant of that. They're somewhat leery of it, and so they're... Once they can set it up where they have some controls in place, it sounds like they will do it, but at this time, it is just for residentials. Taking enough of your time?
I did go on Nextdoor.com while you were speaking. Probably shouldn't have, and you're right, it will be signed up. Someone will be signed up on Blessing Court by the end of the year.
Great. Thank you.
Now, I do have a question. Can we tie all the Facebooks that are commenting about the, you know, the thefts or the vandalism into Nextdoor?
You can access both Facebook and Twitter through Nextdoor. I have... I myself have not... I've refrained from it somewhat, because of course, once you do that, you're, you know, you're kind of opening that Pandora's box to the entire world. So, I've tried to limit it to citywide communication via Nextdoor, but I know that there is a department-wide transition that we're going through to really keep up with all this, basically, activity on social media and be responsive to that. And I know that we're working on that departmentally. I don't know if the sheriff wants to make any comment on that or not, but...
You're doing fine.
Okay. But we are... That is... Those are arenas that we are, you know, we are starting to engage in, so...
It's self-managed? There is no manager, that data manager?
Nextdoor does manage it, and I do know that they have... They do govern to some extent. If something gets completely out of control, I know that there are some controls in place. I'm not aware of Patterson having to take any measures to go ahead and... I'm not sure what the proper terminology is, but to, I guess, mute somebody, because those controls are, like I said, they are... those controls are, like I said, they are, they're already available to the individuals. So I think that people tend to self-police that, where if, if there's a, there's some blazing issues, they, they eliminate them themselves.
And do we monitor, we being you, or your service, monitor the Nextdoor?
Well, and that goes back to what I touched on earlier.
That's what I said about a week ago, less than a week ago, is that you monitor it and can respond to.
We, we can only, we can only see what people directly reply to us regarding. So, so if, if there's like a buzz of activity and communication going on about a certain problem, is, you can use this for, for virtually anything, whether it's, you know, yard sales or lost dogs or what have you. But, but the, the crime element or aspect of it is such that you need to, you need to reply directly to either the, the community services officer, the two sergeants, or myself to share that information. Because if there's dialogue going on amongst the, the residents, but they're not sending it directly to us, then we can't see it. Which is a, you know, it's a double-edged sword. There's, there are pros and cons to that. But the idea is so that people will engage. Because if, you know, if people get the feeling that, you know, we're, we're staring over their shoulder the whole time, then they're, they're going to be a little, a little more reluctant to go ahead and really exchange information as freely, I think. So that's, that's human nature. We understand that. We certainly don't want to, you know, to violate people's, their feeling that they can communicate freely. So it's important that people do communicate directly with us when they want to share information. So, and, and if it's suspicious activity or subjects, and it's in the here and now, again, encourage everybody to call dispatch. That's, that's what it's there for. So now we can get a deputy out to investigate then and there. If it's past tense, and people want to share with us, then by all means, Nextdoor is a great medium. But, but they do need to communicate that directly to us.
Do you have any, any information as to how successful this has been in Patterson?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, they've solved criminal cases using it. So, and that was one of the things that, you know, I'm all about practicality. If something provides a, you know, practical application and solutions, then it's, you know, it's tough to ignore. And I know that they have solved, I think they've all been property crimes-type cases, but they've used it to identify suspects. Or I think suspect vehicles is, that's a big one. Because people will, you know, people will talk. If there's a particular vehicle that's, that's been involved in, whether it's residential burglaries, car burglaries, what have you, people, people will start to take notice and they'll communicate it. But again, they need to reach out to us and communicate that directly with us as well. And we have, a lot of it's weather-related, I think, but we're on the uptick in terms of, we've, we've arrested a couple of mail theft suspects, car burglars, residential burglars, numerous of each of those here in the last three weeks. So, you know, things are on the uptick. And we'll take whatever help we can get to catch these folks. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone from the public wish to ask a question? There, you have one.
Is there a way to tell Nextdoor to ask a sheriff's department a question? They're on there and they want it forwarded something directly to the, instead of having to go out and go onto the web?
No, I, I would have to talk to our IT people. Because I don't, I honestly don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think so. Nextdoor is its own, you know, they're, it's its own entity. So I, yeah, I.
Because I was thinking you might get more response from the, you know, if they're right now, so they knew they had to get it to, to go directly there instead of having to go out. You know, it's all in the base.
Right. Yeah, no, once you're, if that's your medium, if Nextdoor's your medium, then that's, that's pretty much.
That's the stuff there, then you have something to get forwarded on. I just wondered.
Yeah, sure. That's a good question.
Chief, how, how prevalent is this among the, among the city now? Is there, I mean, I, I just went on in my neighborhood, you know, that shows that there is somebody there right in that neighborhood.
It's there, there are only, there's really only one island. I'm not going to mention which one that is again. But really, one, one island that hasn't, where nobody's, you know, signed up as a lead to get it going. It's a pretty, it's a small pocket, but you need to get that one taken care of. But I think, I believe all the others who, I look at the mapping feature, that's the other nice thing, is you can actually go and, and look at the, the mapping system and, and break it down by, see what neighborhoods are there, see how many people have joined. And, and there's just a wealth of information there. So, but as far as I know, it's just the one. We have some other areas that, if you'll see, they're not included in the map, but a lot of those are unincorporated pockets. There is some bleed over. There's some bleed over into the unincorporated areas as well. And a lot of that's up to Nextdoor. And it, it basically boils down to their mapping system and how they can fit everything in there. So. I, I, I did a Google Earth map and gave them my own suggestions, and they, they went another way.
Well, thank you, chief.
Any other questions? All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor, before we move to public comment, I realized when the issue of a conflict of interest came up, that I had not followed up on a question that was posed to me in preparation for this meeting. And that is in regards to the item related to the Chamber of Commerce's request for a fee waiver for farmers market in summer of 2015. Because we have such an active council, we have two members who sit on the Board of Directors. And while they are non-voting members at this point, because of their council status in conference with the city attorney, he, he does have an opinion on that in regards to the conflict of a council member, of, excuse me, Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez and Councilmember Campbell. So I'll let Tom speak to that.
I can't recall whether it was the AG or the FPPC, but they said that if you're on the board, that was kind of a de facto conflict. I'm not sure if we could make a distinction that you're a non-voting member, that might work. But just out of caution tonight, I'd say not having that answer that you abstain on, on that item with a conflict.
So in regards to membership, if the city attorney can recognize, if I'm wrong, is it allowing to be, you're allowed to vote on it if there's no financial gain to you? But what raised a concern specifically for, for Tom was that you were, were board members.
Correct. Then I'll double-check on whether the not voting makes a difference for, next time this comes up.
And I, and I do apologize, this question did come up. And I, and I just, I, I did not follow up to give Tom a chance to research that appropriately before this meeting tonight.
So we do have a conflict of interest. And you two will get to step out and take a break. Public comment. At this time, members from the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council or LAR Board, LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Consistent of Item 3A, waive readings. Item 3B, approval of January 13, 2015, regular city council and local redevelopment minutes as amended. Item 3B1, approval of the January 27, 2015, regular city council and local redevelopment minutes as amended. Item 3C, review and consider the approval of continued emergency action on Seventh Street Storm Drain Outfall Line Destabilized Embankment. Do I have anyone wishing to pull any of the items or comment on any of the consent items? Do I have anyone from the public wishing to comment or pull any of the consent items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Council for consideration and recommendation.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
A motion to approve and a second.
Council authority members, Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 41, second reading by Title Only and adoption of ordinance number 2015-001 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adding Chapter 125 Tattoo and Body Art Establishments to Title 11. Business Regulation and Amending Title 15, zoning. Amending 1, Section 153.076, uses permitted in the neighborhood commercial district C1 zone. 2, Section 153.092, uses permitted in the general commercial district C2 zone. And 3, Section 153.106, uses permitted in commercial industrial CM zone of the City Municipal Code.
Mayor, members of the Council, item, the next four items on the agenda under unfinished business, you may recall, were introduced for first reading at the last city council meeting, and full staff reports were given on each of these items. Tonight, we do not have staff reports planned for any of these items, as they are second readings. However, we do have the city attorney and David Niskanen from J.B. Anderson, and planning to, available to address questions as, as they come up, if they do come up during the second reading. Tonight, the recommendations are for the second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I have a comment I'd actually like to make. And my comment is only with regards to the item 4.1, not the other items. I am struggling, and I just want it stated that I fully appreciate all the hard work that the, that the city manager has done, and, and our city planning folks, and getting the city ordinances all tidied up. And it's definitely needed. And I fully understand all of the, the land use issues that we have in our city, and we need to take care of those. But I am personally kind of struggling with some of the, the regulations and the fine print in there. And so I just kind of wanted to state that out there, that I'm just, you know, I just, I, I think when we, and I stated it in several council meetings ago, I think when we said that we want to be business-friendly, and I think we need to make sure we send that message. And putting these, some of those real stringent regulations on there, I just kind of struggle with a little bit. With that said, I fully understand why we're doing that, and why we have some of those regulations in place. And so it's kind of, I'm kind of torn between the two. I, I definitely have a vision that, that I want to see our downtown look like. And so I kind of struggle with some of those. But I just really wanted to state before we go ahead further, that I just kind of struggle with some of the things that are in, in that wording. And also, I do want to recognize the Planning Commission and all the hard work that they're doing. And, you know, again, I'm kind of torn because I really feel like I need to support the Planning Commission in some of the things that they're working on. And I appreciate all their hard work, too. But again, I kind of struggle with some of the wording in, in this ordinance. Thank you.
I too have stated before that I didn't want this ordinance to appear as if we are singling out on just this type of establishment. And I too know that we do have a vision to move our downtown business areas to be more, more vibrant. And if we have something like this, I just feel that maybe we're stifling our businesses. But we have, I know we have to have ordinances, and we have to stick by what those plans are in those zoned areas. But I just don't want us to be discriminating against just one particular type of business. I just feel, I'm struggling too with this, what I'm trying to say. So.
Are there other businesses that we'll be looking at later on that will have similar constraints? And I believe that, as we were discussing, we're trying to have it more diverse than trying to have concentrated of one type of business. And to protect the $17 million investment that the Downtown Beautification Committee was looking at when getting the city so far in debt with the RDA, and to our, our bondholders. But I, I do appreciate people feeling like this is a restriction. But there are certain restrictions you may want to have on other types of businesses, which we have not tackled here, but we will tackle at other times. With that, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back for comments, recommendations for item 1.4, 4.1.
I move that we accept item 4.1.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 4.1.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
No.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes, motion passes 3-2.
Item 4.2, second reading by Title Only and adoption of ordinance number 2015-002 of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15, Chapter 153, zoning amendment one, amending 1, Section 153.003, definitions. 2, Section 153.061, uses permitted in multiple family residential districts R3 zone. 3, Section 153-077, uses permitted with a use permit in the neighborhood commercial district C1 zone. 4, Section 153.093, uses permitted with a use permit in the general commercial district C2 zone. And 5, Section 153.107, uses permitted with a use permit in the commercial industrial CM zone of the City Municipal Code. Is there any comments or questions from the City Council? Is there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back for recommendation by the City Council.
Does the make a recommendation that we accept the second reading for item 4.2?
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 4.2.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.3, second reading by Title Only and adoption of ordinance number 215-003 of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15, land usage, Chapter 153, zoning, Section 153.185, density bonus requirements of the City Municipal Code. Do I have any questions or comments on item 4.3 from the City Council? Seeing or hearing none, I go to the public. Is there any public comment on item 4.3? Seeing none, I bring it back to the City Council for recommendation.
I'll move that we approve item 4.3, second reading.
I second.
We have a motion to approve item 4.3 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.4, second reading by Title Only and adoption of ordinance number 2015-004 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, add in sections 153.221 through 153.229 to Title 15, land usage, Chapter 153, zoning of the City Municipal Code. Do I have any comments or, or questions on item 4.4 from the City Council? Seeing none, I ask the public if you have any questions on item 4.4. No questions or comments. I bring it back for a recommendation by the City Council on item 4.4.
I'll make a motion that we move for, to accept the second reading on item 4.4.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5, public hearings. Item 5.1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 110, Business License Tax by repealing Section 110.08, exceptions in Sections 110.18, Business License Tax fees, and substituting in its place new Sections 110.08 and 110.18 of the City of Riverbank Code of ordinances.
Mayor, members of the City Council, the general purpose of these amendments are to make it easier for businesses and nonprofits to participate in city events, particularly those, those put on by the city. And to clarify some issues in regards to when there are fee waivers, and when things need to go to the City Council for, for special events. Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick will lead the presentation this evening with assistance from Maricela Garcia. Also, Annabelle Argular participated in the preparation of this, along with our city attorney staff. So Tom will be able to also address any issues that come up. But at this point, Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Mayor, members of the council, as Jill mentioned, we wanted to kind of clean up this, this ordinance. this ordinance a bit, just to make it clear on how to operate. So some of the, the purpose of the proposed amendments is to clarify what constitutes an exemption of a business license fee. There was a little confusion on, when we were referring to the ordinances on that, so we wanted to clarify, to update the business license tax fee provisions, we noticed there's some updates that were needed, so we thought this would be a good opportunity to do that as well, to clarify the required permit process and to provide a better and consistent customer service, and that's one of our strategic plans as well, is to improve customer service. So those are the reasons that we have this to you tonight. So one of the sections is Section 11008, clarification on exemptions of a business license fee payment. So primarily, what we wanted to accomplish is to clarify what constitutes a nonprofit status, and the amendment does do that. Independent contractor exemption, we wanted to clarify what constitutes an independent contractor status. For example, we wanted to have exempt when the circus comes to town and they give Parks and Recreation a percentage of the money for scholarships that they raise from that event. We wanted to have them considered as an exemption under that. Special and seasonal activities exemption, clarify what constitutes an exception for nonprofit organizations and for vendors that are for-profit or not-for-profit in connection with city organized or sponsored events, and that would be vendors at, say, the Christmas Parade, or vendors at Riverfest, some of the activities that we do. We wanted to provide some consistency on that. Include the exemption for the U.S. Veterans honorably discharged or released pursuant to the California Professionals and Business Code. We needed to make sure we added that into our section. And then just adding the language clause B to the exemptions, "Any person claiming an exemption pursuant to this section shall file a sworn statement with the collector stating the facts upon which exemption is claimed and providing any additional documentation the collector reasonably deems necessary in the absence of such statement substantiating the claim. Such person shall be liable for the payment of taxes imposed by this chapter." The amendment to Section 11018 updates the business license tax fee. We noticed that there was a $2 parking fund provision that does not exist, so we wanted to remove that. Adds the SB 1186 provision, which requires a separate line item of a dollar fee to every business license application. Clarifies the business license fees for profit and nonprofit organizations under special and seasonal activities, and like I said, that area just needed to be clarified. Amendments to Section 11018 also reconstitutes the permit requirements. Exemption of a business license tax fee does not remove the requirement of obtaining a permit for an event. So for example, when, using the circus as an example, if we were to exempt them from the business license, that doesn't mean they don't need to pay the permit fees or still obtain the permits. The permits are still required. Community special events, the amendments clarify the application permit process, and we talked a lot about this when we were talking about special events and the new application that we developed, that's been going very well, but this puts it in its proper context in this section. That any applicable fees are set by resolution, the permit review and approval process, what constitutes approval by the city council, what constitutes approval by the city manager, and what is considered a community special event. The benefits that are proposed, of proposed amendments just provides clear direction on the payment or non-payment of a business license tax fee, provides consistent application of a business license tax fee waiver, increases organization and vendor participation in community events, centralizes the required permitting process, and clarifies the roles, responsibilities, fees, type of organizations, and special definitions. So that's basically what we were trying to accomplish with all of that. Is there any questions or comments regarding the business licenses or special event permit process?
You have fireworks stands, and you have crossed out local nonprofits organizations exempt, so those will no longer be exempt.
The nonprofits will be exempt. Is that correct?
No, that's not what you have here. You have fireworks stands, then you have crossed out, you know, for examples, and then you have non, local nonprofit organization is exempt. That's lined out, that's no longer exempt. Is that correct?
If you look at B, the heading is, number one, for-profit organizations. So fireworks stands, this is for-profit fireworks stands.
Where's the nonprofit one?
Will be, number two, for nonprofit organizations. The business license fees for the special seasonal activity shall be waived, so that covers nonprofits.
Okay, all right. You know, I, for some reason, I glazed that one, because I had all the nonprofits struck out in that one.
Right, and it used to be confusing, that's why we separated from the nonprofit to the nonprofit.
See, I understood the first one, and then you made it unconfusing.
[laughing]
All right? That answered my question. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, I opened a public hearing.
Hello, my name is Dale from 3442 Atchison Street. So does that mean fireworks stands would be or would not be like the baseball teams and different little leagues and stuff like that? Would they be exempt or not exempt?
It depends on if they're profit or nonprofit status. We'll determine their status and then...
What, their status, and then they would pay, and the maximum would be up to $75? Is that what it is, or is there a different fee?
Well, if they're profit, it's a $50 day.
Okay.
Yes.
$50, not per day, but...
Yes, it is.
Yes, per day.
Oh, okay. Otherwise, it would be waived.
Otherwise, nonprofit, that meet the status of nonprofit organizations, are exempt.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I close public hearing, bring it back to the city council.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 5.1.
I second that.
We have a motion to approve item 5.1 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, table the first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, amending Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 91, Animals, and Chapter 94, Park Regulations of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, members of the city council, and this is an item that we're also working on to clean up the code, and it has been a little bit more challenging than we had initially hoped, and in part, that's because we have three different agencies and including, and actually, the park exists in a different county, while not as big a deal. We are trying to take the City of Riverbank ordinances to comply with the City of Oakdale ordinances because they provide animal control, and also make it consistent with the codes and ordinances and laws that the county sheriff's department needs to comply with. So in order to make that as unconfusing as possible, it's taken a little bit longer than we had initially anticipated. So at this point, we are requesting it be tabled, but to recommend that the public hearing be open and provide an opportunity for some comments to be provided and go through that process as well at this point.
Thank you. Before I open it to public comments, I'd also, is there any comments or questions from the staff? Seeing none, I open the public hearing. Are there any public comments or questions on item 5.2? You can add in your comments for some of these ordinances that we are considering. Seeing none, I close public hearing, bring it back to the council, and do we have to go through the approval of a tabling?
We recommend a motion to table.
Okay, who would like to motion to approve a table?
I move that we table.
I'll second.
We have a motion to table or to approve item 5.2, that is, to table the first reading, and we have a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California to establish amend or authorize fees for the City of Riverbank Recreation Program Parks and Facility Use.
And Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will present the staff report on this item.
Mayor and members of the council, we have completed our schedule of activities for the spring and summer season, and you hopefully have gotten this, we have these activity guides out for spring/summer, we're excited, and they came out really nice, and we're bringing the fees to council for review and approval. Most of our fees are staying the same, facility use, park reservations, all of those are staying the same, we just needed to make some adjustments for some of our programs because of the increased cost, and that mainly came to be with the minimum wage increase that we had last year. And then we have some new programs that you haven't seen before that we are asking for authorization for fees. So that doesn't really fit there, but just looking at the chart here, we have the Got Color Fun Run is a new program that's going to happen at Jacob Myers Park, and that's going to be back on the trail. We're going to charge $30 for a single runner, two runners will be $50, three runners, $80, four runners will be $110, so this is a new fee. The Hip Hop Camp is a new program, and that's $55 for a week-long camp. Outdoor Adventure Camp has been around for many, many years. We needed to adjust that up by $10 just to cover the expenses, and these are mostly all designed to cover themselves, they're self-sustaining. The Skateboard Camp, again, went up $10 from $35 to $45. Summer Fun Science Camp is another longstanding camp that we've had, it's very popular, we had to raise that up by 10 as well. Cheerleading Camp is a program that we're bringing back again, had to adjust that fee. Basketball Camp, same. Games Explosion Camp is a new program, and that's just within the same timeframe as far as the $90 a week-long camp. Little Dribblers and Putters is a new program, it's kind of a takeoff from Start Smart that we did many years ago for three-to-five-year-olds, so that's going to be $55. Santa Cruz Teen Trip, we did that a few years ago, but it's new now, newly designed, so we're going to charge $25 to the teens for that. Pioneer Trail Camping Trip is a new program, and that's going to be $20 per participant. And Tai Chi Chuan is a new program, and that's going to be an eight-week program for $85. So those are our programs for the spring/summer. Do you have any questions?
Those are not all encompassing of what you are offering.
No, everything is in our activity guide, those are the programs we had to raise the fee on, or new programs, and also, I wanted to remember to let everyone know, we do have a scholarship fund, so even though we have to raise the fees a little bit, we still have, we have a good, good set of scholarship funds that we'll be able to use this year. So if anyone can't afford the program, we will make sure that they can still participate.
Is the reason that the fees needed to be raised just so that we break even, basically, on our expenses, or...
We break even on, not if we looked at all of our expenses, but as far as our direct expenses, we try to cover staffing, a lot of times I have in my recreation and park budget, that you'll see later, is I have the recreation program supplies, so that's generally coming out of the general fund, but we cover the staffing and a few other things in that, so we're trying to make it as self-sufficient as we can. And the minimum wage increase, it was, it affected us more than we thought, because not only did it bring people, most of our people already made the $9 an hour, but it bumped everybody up. All the steps had to go up, so it really had more of an effect than we thought when we saw, you know, kind of how things were working out when we were trying to plan our camps.
I understand that completely. Okay, any further questions on, which one are we on? Item 5.3. Okay, this is a public hearing, I open it now to the public for comments. Seeing no public comment, I close the public hearing, bring it back for a resolution from the city council.
I have a question before we move forward. How are we letting people know that we do have scholarship? Is it in the activity guide, to let people know we do have scholarships?
It's in the activity guide, it's also on our website, and we try to spread the word, especially through the schools and through people we're contacting with, we know kind of where to get the word out, but we'd like to even increase that, so we're brainstorming on ways to, because we don't have as many people use the scholarship fund as we'd like to. I would like to see us, I mean, I like having that balance, but I would like to exhaust it and make sure that people are using it, so we do have it, and if you have any ideas...
I do, I'll talk to you later.
Let me know.
I have a connection I think might be useful for us.
Perfect, that's good.
Still open for a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we approve item 5.3.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.3 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.4, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the first public hearing for the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Notice of Funding Available NOFA Cycle.
And Maricela Garcia will provide a brief overview of this for the city council and the public. And for those who are not aware, Maricela Garcia is our...
Thank you very much, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts, thank you.
Maricela Garcia is our Director of Finance, and you'll be seeing a lot of her this evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the first public hearing with regards to the CDBG Notice of Funding Availability. The NOFA was issued in January and is, currently has about $24 million available for a variety of programs. The city itself can apply for up to $2 million, with the exception of over-the-counter or economic development applications, which can be up to $5 million. CDBG requires that a public hearing be held to establish the city's intention in applying, and then a second public hearing will be held March 24th, should the city have an application that we will be submitting. Past awards, we've been very successful. We currently are eligible to apply for these grants because we are a non-entitlement city. The Stanislaus County has a consortium of cities that all receive a block of funding, and it's apportioned out to the individual cities that are part of that consortium. We have been invited to be part of that, but we've found that we have been very successful in applying on our own, and so these are some of the grants that we've received in the past, and just recently, in 2013, we were awarded $1 million for housing rehab and first-time homebuyer projects, and so those programs are currently in progress. And so as projects are completed, especially with our housing rehab program, which we haven't had since 2004, we are very excited to be able to show that to the city council at a later date. Eligible activities that are, we can apply for funding under our business assistance projects, micro enterprise assistance, housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, housing acquisition, public infrastructure projects, public facility projects, public service programs, and planning and a technical assistance grants. Some of the requirements that we need to meet are that the projects need to meet one of the two national objectives, which, the first being a benefit to low and moderate-income persons, or the prevention or elimination of slums or blights. And we must have expended at least 50% of our currently open grant, which... And we must have expended at least 50% of our currently open grant, which is of $1 million, so we need to have at least $500,000 expended. Currently, in order to do that, we do need to fund at least one first-time homebuyer loan, which currently we're having a little bit of difficulty with that. There's no applicants that have been successfully submitting bids for homes and that they've been accepted, so we do have a number of people that are eligible, and we have already income screened them, so that all they need to do is find the home and have an accepted purchase agreement, but we don't currently have one sort of in the books. With our housing rehab, we currently have two projects that are in progress. We have one project that is beginning in its phase, in the design phase, and then we have a fourth project that would actually help us meet that $500,000 threshold as well that is currently in the income screening process. So our recommendation tonight is for the City Council to open the public hearing, solicit any public input from our residents, and provide us feedback on any additional projects or programs that you would like us to consider for inclusion in the NOFA this year. Should we be eligible to apply, we have already spoken to Sue Fitzpatrick of the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as to our Development Services Administration with regards to public infrastructure projects, to see if we have any projects that are sort of shovel-ready to go that we would be able to present. One of the ideas that we had was perhaps the community center or the pool locker rooms, because those do serve our low-income residents because they're open to all of the residents in Riverbank. I do have to caveat that in, the CDBG does look at our low-to-moderate income, household incomes, and they have a specific ranking based on how many, what percentage you have based on the census, and based on the last census, we're at about a 20% to 30%, which in comparison to other cities is not very high, so we don't tend to rank very high when it comes to that determination. One of the suggestions we've had is to do our own income screening, and so that would require most likely a general fund allocation to do that. So if it is something that the City Council would like for us to proceed with, it's something we can go out to request estimates on to see how much an income, excuse me, an income survey, not a screening, but a survey would cost.
That'll be something to discuss at the strategic planning. When we look at rehabilitation of housing, does that include, let's say, if someone owns a mobile home, that's in a mobile home park in the city of Riverbank?
So we do look at mobile homes, those can sometimes be a little bit more difficult to work with, because now we have to deal with the state, because the state actually inspects and regulates mobile homes, and then there's actually the issue with, they don't have title, they have a pink slip, sort of like a vehicle, but we have dealt with that in the past, and we have had a housing rehab project that we did in the past, so it's something we can accommodate, should we see the real need.
Okay.
A question. What kind of timeframe are we looking at for the grant that we have to use the?
We have to have at least the $500,000 expended by April 10th, which is the due date of the application.
Okay. And what happens if we don't meet the deadline?
If we're not able to meet the deadline, we're not able to apply this year, that means we'll be able to apply next year, and actually by not applying this year, we would receive bonus points next year because we didn't apply. So that could cover the income issue that we currently have.
Any no further comments? This is a public hearing, open it for public comment.
My name is Darryl from 3442 Atchison Street, and I heard, I don't know if this has to do with that particular subject on it, but I guess you'll let me know, when you talked about blight, is, are you talking about even part of Atchison Street, which is the gateway of Riverbank? And you should be, I understand, you know, you can't do anything with Del Rio, and Serval is doing his thing, whatever I guess he can do, and the Saw Place, I'm assuming that someone has, even if he is out of state, out of country, or whatever, you should be able to work with someone on that. I know some of these people live far away or not, but that's, anything from First Street to Claus Road should be constantly be looked at as a gateway to Riverbank, and should be constantly be looked at, what kind of blight, or what future, you know, because I know Del Rio is a far way in advanced future thing, because no one can do anything with that, it sounds like, but hopefully there is something, a future in that, so, hopefully, okay?
Any further public comment? Senior hearing done, I close the public comment. Bring this back to the City Council to accept this as our first public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we accept this as our first public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept item 5.1 as our first public hearing and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.5, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving the fiscal year 2014-15 mid-year budget amendments.
Mayor and members of the City Council, at this time Ms. Maricela Garcia will present the overview of the 2014-2015 mid-year budget, this is kind of our mid-year review of how we're doing and meeting our projections and estimates that were established in June of 2014.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, tonight we are visiting our mid-year budget review. What this does is it provides us an opportunity to review our revenue and expenditure projections to see if we're still on track to meet those, as well as to true-up sometimes the reserve projections that we had at the beginning of the year. When we issue our budgets in June, the year, the fiscal year hasn't ended, and so sometimes our reserve, our reserve projections need to be adjusted in order to accommodate for activity that has occurred. And so just to give you a brief overview of the presentation, we'll discuss where we were at the final budget adoption, and what our general fund reserve projections were at, where we currently are with our mid-year budget review, and looking at our major revenue and expenditure projection changes, and our appropriation requests, and where we're going, so some future expenditures that we'll need to consider in upcoming fiscal years. And so as of June 30th, 2014, we believe that we would be at $819,200 for our beginning reserve, and that still stands true, that was a correct projection. We had estimated revenues of $8.26 million and expenditures of $8.235, and so that left our reserve as of 6/30/2015 at $847,000, or approximately 10.3%. We are required to have at least a minimum of 10% in our reserve, which would have been $826,000, so we did have a little bit of a surplus to our reserve of $20,000, with the structural surplus, meaning that our revenues exceeded our expenditures of $28,000. With our mid-year budget, we had the opportunity to revisit these projections, and we've made adjustments based on new information or revenue and expenditure trends, and we provided the departments with an opportunity to request new appropriations for emergency projects that require semi-media attention. And so where we currently are, and I'm showing here the major general fund revenue adjustments that are being proposed, our property tax current secured and proposing, proposing, excuse me, an adjustment of $34,000 decrease. There is an overestimate in the increase of the property values by our assessor's office. Some of this could be due to delinquencies, as you'll notice the second line item is our property tax prior secured, these were last fiscal year's delinquencies that are just now coming into our revenue stream, so some of that may be due to the continuance of those delinquencies. We're still having, I'm still having discussions with the tax collector's office, just to see if that's where the trend is going. Our property tax prior secured will be receiving an additional $27,000 this year for that, for the delinquent payments. Our building permit fees, I was extremely conservative when I made this projection, not knowing which way KB Homes would be going, I'm not knowing how successful they may be in their construction. To date, they have pulled 34 permits and are continuing to build, and so we are requesting an adjustment of $65,000 to our building permit fees. VLF property tax, this is an allocation that we receive from the state of California, it's tied to our assessed values, but the state does set that threshold, and so we will be receiving an additional $105,000 this year based on their estimates. Grants, we are receiving continued grant funds for the State Route 108 relinquishment, and so this year we'll be receiving $207,000 towards that work. And I'm requesting a decrease in the transfer-in of our management fees of $43,800, this is due to the building and planning manager vacancy that we currently have, with no salary being expended for that, then we don't require the sewer and water fund to contribute towards that, and so we are decreasing the request in those funds as well. And so overall, for our revenues, our original projection was $8.26 million, our amended projection is $8.6 million, for a difference of $375, almost $376,000. And as I mentioned, some of that was the grant money, and that was $207,000 of it, which is 55% of this adjustment, and those are one-time revenues that will not be ongoing through our upcoming fiscal years. Although we may continue the work through upcoming fiscal years, it will only offset the expenses that we have. In terms of general fund expenditure adjustments that are being requested, these are some of the major adjustments being made to our planning department, personnel and regular, personnel regular and benefits, requesting an adjustment of $87,800, that's due to the vacant manager's position. Our planning professional services, we currently use JB Anderson for our planning services, with the vacancy, we're continuing to use him for a lot of our planning work, and so we're simply shifting the monies from one account to another in order to continue the contract that we have with JB Anderson. Our finance professional service, we're requesting an adjustment of $13,900, and it's not just for the new billing company that we currently have, so you'll be noticing new utility bills in your next utility bill that will be going out in May, so we did transition to a different company and a different provider for that, which is saving us costs in terms of printing, so this was just one of the startup fees. We're also requesting additional funds, $7,900 of that $13,000 is for our Prop 218 cost for our garbage services. In economic development professional services, there's the adjustment of $207,000 from the grant, and those really come at the whim of the state, when the state decides to pay, then that's when we decide that we can pay our contractor, and so when the funds are received, then they're happy because they know we can pay them. And so our original projection in terms of expenditures was of $8.3 million, our amended projection is $8.5, or a difference of $244,000. And so our revised general fund status as of this point in time, our beginning reserve remains the same at $819,000, our amended revenues of $8.63, almost $8.64, our revenue expenditures, excuse me, of $8.55, will leave us with the reserve of $906,000, or 10.5%. Our required reserve with the adjusted revenues is $863,000, and so that leaves us a reserve to our surplus of $42,000. Other major fund adjustments that we're currently requesting are gas tax revenue, we're requesting an increase of $81,150, and that's due to revised estimates that we've received from the state. Personnel overtime, increase of $2,000, and that was due to some additional overtime incurred during the storms that we had here in the city. And our group health insurance, I'm requesting a decrease of $7,000, and that's due to savings from our prior fiscal year that we were able to apply to this year's expenses. We're also adjusting the beginning reserve projection for our gas tax fund, our original projection was $267,000, we're amending that to $408,000, or an increase of $140,000. So gas tax was very good, a lot of people taking trips and using a lot of gas last year, unfortunately that will not be the case next year. Although we will end with a reserve of 56%, we have been advised by the state that our estimates will increase significantly in the upcoming year. That's due to decreased fuel costs, due to decreased fuel purchases as well, with more energy-efficient vehicles being out there. And then there's this thing called the vehicle tax swap that the state has done, where they have set a specific dollar amount of 18 cents per gallon for a capital improvement fund, and those funds will be significantly decreased because the State Board of Equalization is able to adjust that rate on an annual basis, and it will be adjusted next year. And so we will be losing at least $150,000 next fiscal year from that particular revenue source. And so we will be looking at the possibility of having to fund our gas tax operations through our reserves. With the 56% reserve at this point in time, we are healthy, and we will not expend all of that, but we will need to be cautious if this continues in the future. Other fund adjustments, in our sewer fund, we're adjusting our industrial permit revenue upwards of $30,000, and that's due to increased revenues received from two businesses, Pacific Gold and Compass Foods. Our sewer collection standby, we're also requesting an adjustment of $2,000 for the increased overtime during the storm activity, all of our staff in the sewer department are actually also part of our streets department, and so they do share responsibilities, and so some of these costs do come over to sewer. We also have health insurance savings in this fund as well, of $2,000 that will be used to offset expenses this year, and we're decreasing our deferred compensation estimate due to a decrease in matching funds for a few employees. So our beginning reserve projection, we're also looking at an increase in our sewer fund, which is positive news. We're looking at an original projection of $318,000, amended it would be $504, with a difference of $186,000. And so where does that place us? At the end of this fiscal year, we're looking at an ending reserve of 15%, although it's semi-healthy, it's still not as healthy as we would like for it to be, in the case of an emergency, $316,000 probably won't take us too far. So we currently are still under, going through the water and sewer rate study, and so we hope to have that for you March 24th for your review. There still is a structural deficit as well of $188,000. Our water fund, on the other hand, is very healthy at this point in time, the only major amendment that we're making is a amendment to the beginning reserve, we're requesting an additional $268,000 to that reserve. We're requesting an additional $268,000 to that reserve due to increased revenues received in the last fiscal year as well as expenditure savings that we had. Our revised beginning reserve in our water fund is $966,000. We did make some minor revenue adjustments, bringing that up to 1.72 million dollars, revised expenditures of 1.68, and that would end our reserve at 58% or $994,000. So that we do have a slight structural surplus that we're projecting this year of $28,000. Other funds we're looking at is our AB 109 realignment funds, which are available to our Riverbank Police Services. There's no restriction as to how these funds can be used. So the chief has allocated these funds out to a variety of projects that are necessary within his building as well as to other services offered. For example, the crossroad shopping holiday security that's, that's done every year. Usually we fund that through our general fund or through grant monies. This year, we were able to fund that through the AB 109 realignment funds of 90, so we're requesting $9,800. We, the police services is updating their filing system, a lot due to safety concerns of how their filing system is now and for ease of being able to find the information more efficiently. And so they're requesting $7,000 in order to complete that project. They do have some funds already allocated towards that, but they do need an additional $7,000 to go towards that. And the third item is the carpet replacement at the police services for $5,000, and that's due to safety concerns as well. There's a lot of rippling in the carpet, and so they, they would like to address that. System development fees, police and general government, we are requesting an allocation of $7,000 to our professional services account. And this will allow for the Riverbank Historical Society to contract with a architect in order to provide some museum annex layouts and exterior design. And so that will continue to move this project forward until we're able to collect sufficient construction funds and will help with any fundraising efforts that they may have in the future. We do currently have a few appropriation requests that have not been included as part of the adjustments, but that we are requesting your feedback on. The first being the HVAC system at the scout hall. We're requesting 14,700. There's two units that are currently 20 years old. They'll be replaced with energy efficient systems that will help reduce utility costs as well as maintenance costs. The second is the dry rot repair at Castleburg Park. This was requested during the annual budget preparation, and it's being requested again as summer and spring and summer come in. We want to make sure that our buildings are in tip-top shape. We're requesting an appropriation of $4,900 towards that project. And these would both be general fund monies. Administrative services, we've got to request there. There's a, we'd like to transition one of our supply rooms into an office for our administrative analyst, and so they are requesting $3,000 to be able to do that. She does deal with some personal and confidential information, so we'd like to give her the ability to, to be able to do her work in, in such a manner. We are also requesting training fees for our management consulting with an additional $5,000. So what we are preparing for in the future, some major expenditures will include the final repayment of the downtown beautification ED Bank loan to San Osos County. Next year will be our final year of this loan. And so if the, when the funds are appropriated as of July 1st, I'd like to go ahead and make that payment rather than wait till December just so that we have it off the books and so we're able to, to move forward with evaluating where our general fund is at that point in time. We will also need to look at a general fund subsidy to the community center fund. Currently, the fund is running at a deficit in our community center due to some of the fee waivers, due to some of the utility costs that we've had there. And so we will be requesting a subsidy most likely at the end of this year to cover this year's expenses, once we're able to determine that figure, as well as expenses for next year. And an item that I did not include on here, but that we also need to keep in mind, is the continued Seventh Street storm drain outfall that will need remediation. Currently, they're undergoing, they will be undergoing the geotechnical and design phase. Once a design is established, we will need to allocate funds towards that project. Unfortunately, we don't have any other dedicated funding source other than the general fund for that. Some exciting things, we have renewed interest for new development, so that includes both housing and commercial. So we hope that that continues into the upcoming fiscal years. And then we will have for you the sewer and water rate increase proposals. And we have asked that, we have those in place by July 1st so that the new rates will be able to bring us revenue in the upcoming fiscal year. And so tonight, we're recommending that you approve the mid-year budget amendments as presented, as well as provide direction on the new general fund budget appropriations that were being requested. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Our structural surplus is 28,000, but our overage is only 20,000. You're requesting 27,600 to be expended. Would that bring us down below the 10%?
For our general fund, our actual, it's really the reserve surplus we want to look at, that $42,000, because that's what you have over and above.
It would be $15,000 above our overage, our reserve.
So we, our ending reserve is estimated to be $906,000, and our required 10% reserve is 863,000. So that difference is the 42. So the structural surplus is slightly higher than that, and it looks like I just copied the, the incorrect figure in that structural surplus. But really, it's the reserve surplus that we want to look at in terms of allocating funds, because then that will allow us to ensure that we meet that minimum 10% reserve and that we're not spending any more than what's required.
And then that, any excess could be applied towards the Seventh Street?
That's correct. Towards the Seventh Street, towards the ED Bank loan payment for next year, because it does increase by $25,000. And so it is at the purview of this, of the council where we allocate that and where we segregate that out.
Where are we in expenditures of funds for the Seventh Street and Bankland? How much do we have left in, in that? We allocated X amount, what, 35,000?
We allocated $35,000, but Michael would be the best source of information for, for that number.
We, we expended 15,000 on the, on the temporary repairs and to hold it together. So we still got about 20,000 there.
Okay, and whatever we come up with above that.
The 20,000 will probably cover the geotech work and the design.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel a little better on that one, thank you. Okay.
So it is staff's recommendation that you accept this report, make the mid-year adjustments, and approve the proposed expenditures of the structural surplus.
I need a point of clarification, because with the Historical Society that they're doing the 7,000 with, I have a relative that's involved in that. So Tom, does that affect me in any way?
It's not an FPPC conflict. You might consider it a common law conflict. That is the perception. So I would.
Recommend I do.
I always recommend when in doubt, conflict out, so.
He leaves the dais?
Conflict out on the one item, on the vote of the one item?
Yeah, in that case, in that case, I think that would be appropriate. Not the entire, yeah, but just on that one. Since it's not a FPPC conflict per se, you could separate them.
How do I do that?
No, he wants me to do it for you.
Do we have, that's not part of this, though, right?
It is, it is part of the expenditures.
I'd just abstain from the vote.
Should I not vote at all?
No, he can, he can, he can go for the first vote, but he can't go for the second vote.
Wherever the 7,000 is allocated in here, right. I would abstain on that.
Okay, I'll follow your recommendation.
All right. This is a public hearing, I open it for public comment. You know, public comment, I close it, bring it back to the staff for, to the council for recommendations. And the recommendations are these. Either to approve or not approve the midterm fiscal year 2014-15 mid-year budget. And the second is they provide guidance on one-time capital expenditures that will impact the city budget.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item 5.5 and number one.
We have a recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2014-15 mid-year budget amendment.
A second?
And a second.
Council members, Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and then to provide guidance on the one-time capital expenditures that will impact the city budget, and that is the 14,700, the 4,900, the 3,000, and the 5,000 in training fees, is that correct? Okay, do we have a motion to approve or reject?
I make a motion that we approve those expenditures.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the guidance, one-time capital expenditures, and a second.
Council members, Joan Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item five, LRA item 5.6, resolution of the local redevelopment authority of the city of Riverbank, California, approving mid-year budget adjustments and accepting the second quarter revenue expenditure report.
Mayor members of the city council and members of the LRA, Ms. Debbie Olson is here this evening to present the second quarter review and mid-year. Melissa Holdaway, though, will present the staff report with assistance from the executive director.
Ms. Marcela got you warmed up with numbers. I'm going to keep on that same track, and I am Debbie Olson, the executive director of the LRA. And I wanted to say a couple of things before we actually get into the guts of the mid-year budget. And, and that is, it, it feels a little bit celebratory, monumental. If you think about it, it was, it was five years ago. So this March, it was five years ago that we went on to the site. And since then, I think we've seen a lot of change. And I, I just wanted to remind us that when we look at these budgets at how far we've come and the progress we've made. And I think the growth and, and in seeing our vision come realized as this is an economic engine going from under 10 businesses to over 39 businesses on the site is really impressive. And I want to thank the board for their support all along, and, and hopefully we continue that. But again, with that growth also comes some, some additional stress on an old site with old buildings. And so I want to also remind you that we decided that this year we would invest, reinvest some of our budget in making sure that the infrastructure is there for the tenants when they need it and that it doesn't collapse around us. So, you know, with that sort of a preface to what you're going to see, I want to remind you also that the Army requires us to put all of the revenue back into the site. And so you're going to see a reflection of, of that and, and some of the decisions we've made over the past couple of quarters in this particular quarter. So Melissa, do you want to start down that road?
Good evening. Okay, this is going to be the second quarter revenue expenditure report, and then later on, you'll see the mid-year adjustments that we've requested. As I go through the slides, I will only point out anomalies that stand out in the second quarter budget. And if you have any questions on any of the line items, you can ask them at that time, and I'll address them. Fund 197, this is the revenue that we have received in the second quarter. Revenue is currently on target. We do have an additional revenue that we received for utilities based on billings that were delayed, and now they've caught up. And so our revenue is back on target. Fund 197, administrative expenditures. These expenditures that you see are just the 10% match. The majority of the expenditures for administrative expenses do go towards the OEA grant that funds all of our administrative expenses at this time. A continuation of the administrative expenditures with professional services, facility contracts, these are not covered under the OEA grant, except for the other services, which is a contract we have for a study. The facility contracts, the facility management, we did have some storm events that happened. So this quarter, we did see a little increase in the billings for that quarter. Facility operations and maintenance, the, the only thing that stood out basically is electrical infrastructure, which you are aware of, for the upgrades and the repairs. The fire suppression maintenance did go over budget due to a five-year inspection that did lead to some deficiencies that we were talking about in the mid-year adjustments as well. 197 side expenditures continued, facility operations and maintenance. Common area electrical costs did exceed what we had in the second quarter, and it's just based on the time of the billings and when we receive the revenue and when we, we send out the invoices. So the second quarter, December's did not show up to reflect that. That's why there's a decrease in that line item. Our total expenditures to date were 498,948, leaving us with net revenue, less expenditures of 176,000. So we were over for that quarter, but year-to-date, we do have a deficit until the revenues catch up to the expenditures. Fund 198, the OEA grant, these are revenues that come in and the expenditures that go against them, and it always leaves a zero balance at the end because they do offset them. And we are on target for that. We do have some supplemental funding that.
Yeah, I wanted to mention here that we have requested supplemental funding from OEA because our assumptions at the beginning, we anticipated that we would have the MOA signed, we would have additional revenue from bills of sale, et cetera, and we anticipated that our ESCA number two would have been executed. And you can't double dip with the federal government. So the OEA would reduce our funding in this area for our agency. We have since gone back with none of those assumptions coming true. We've gone back and are in the process of negotiating an additional supplemental cost to cover our agency's salaries, benefits, and administration.
Fund 199, the ESCA number one. At the time of the adoption of the budget, we were in negotiations with the Army on a couple of modifications that were coming through for additional work that needed to be done at the site. Since that time, we have included the revenue we had, the cash on hand, including the modifications that increased the revenue to cover those expenses through the year. And right now, we're sitting at a year-to-date total of 470,596 in the account. The LRA fiscal year 14-15 budget overview. As you can see in the approved budget, we did have a surplus with the changes in mid-year with the actual costs coming through. We do have a deficit of 140,644. But overall, in the year-to-date, we should have, we should be ahead 434,000. The LRA reserve balance, the beginning reserves were 716,000. The total revenue we're expected to receive is 3.8 million. Expenditures are 3.9 million with an ending projected balance of the 575,547. This does reflect, reflect the structural deficit reducing our year-end projections. And our mid-year budget overview. Development since the adoption of the fiscal year 2014-15 budget, revised projections, adjustments to the revenue and expenditures. At the time of adoption, our revenue, we had an OEA grant that had not been executed. The ESCA modifications, two of them were not executed, and the MOA memorandum of agreement had not been executed. Expenditures, electrical infrastructure upgrade costs were finalized. Expenditures, electrical infrastructure upgrade costs were finalized. Five-year fire inspection, fire suppression inspection uncovered deficiencies in the system in October of 2014. And then major roof repairs this winter with the storm events that took place. FY 2014-15 mid-year. The OEA grant was approved with no changes. ESCA modification was approved by the Army. We have added the balance of the grant into the revenue for fiscal year 14-15. MOA execution delayed, resulting in no transfer of land or bills of sale. Proposed revenue changes. Overall, our budget, the revenue changes, we are ahead. We are increasing our revenues to $751,000 above what we had projected, even with a delay in the transfer of the sale of personal property. And I think Debbie wanted to bring to your attention some of that that came to light since we initially adopted.
So I think it's worth noting, we know that with the memorandum of agreement, we would receive the bills of sale. Our anticipation was to capture that revenue and use it for the infrastructure improvements, et cetera. And so we anticipated about $1 million coming in from that. With the MOA not being signed, we've reduced it by $500,000. And it's reasonable that you would say, well, why wouldn't you reduce it by all of it? Well, the reason is because we have intangible personal property, which is cash, that will come to us very quickly upon the sale. We also are in negotiations or discussing with the Army the possibility of selling surplus equipment on their behalf to fund some of their critical infrastructure needs as well on the site. So that's why we have left a portion of this in and anticipate that we might be, we will be able to appropriate at least that much toward the infrastructure upgrades that we're trying to do.
I know that was agreed to verbally. Has that been put in writing?
Yes.
Thank you.
We were asked to provide a memo, which we have, which is now being circulated. And we've had secondary discussions since our first discussion on that.
So it's not actually approved by the Army, but it's tentatively approved. And normally, when it goes through the Army, it comes back to us with changes not discussed nor agreed to. I'm kidding.
I remain hopeful.
The proposed expenditures. The majority of proposed expenditures are within the facility operation and maintenance categories as discussed prior. New laws regarding minimum wage, overtime and holiday pay had to be factored into our security contract. So there's why that's an increase in that line item. We are taking $20,000 from the tenant improvements. We're allocating to the electrical upgrade because it was specifically targeted for a tenant that now we're doing it for the whole site. Proposed expenditures for the ESCA number one. The Western contracts, fixed costs, that's for the remaining presses to be remediated. SJS contract, which has been paid in full. The Western contract's been paid in full. Administrative expenses that we have a percentage of going. And then debt service, of course, is the ED Bank loan with a disencumber of the $5,488 because we didn't expend the full $300,000. Total revenue adjustments, $751,512. With the total expenditure adjustments of $1,061,512, leaves us a deficit of $140,644. Again, that is being picked up by our reserve balance and leaves us an ending projected balance of $575,000. Any questions?
I have just a couple, they're easy, they're softballs. We have a $5,000 budget, and we've only expended, you know, what? I think I read 380, something like that, 320. Have we been doing anything with the Alliance to get our name out there? I know we don't have any more space, but still, I know some of the companies would probably love to have the free advertisements we could probably do with, you know, expanding their horizon that will eventually help our horizon.
So we are often trying to find ways to bring the Alliance and the support they provide to other businesses on to the site. We've held some workshops, we've had some of the programs that they promote. We've had those individuals come and share specifically with tenants. And we've also sent lists of our tenants to the Alliance for them to contact them specifically if they have things that we may not know about or just maybe don't have time to get the word out on. It is a good reminder that we redouble our efforts. And I appreciate you reminding us of that because I'm sure that there's opportunities for the Alliance to support these businesses in ways I'm not even aware of. So I will...
They have periodicals, and I'd like to see, try getting Riverbank Corner. And we start capitalizing on our businesses downtown and at the RIC. And not only downtown, all of our businesses within Riverbank, including the Riverbank Industrial Complex. See if we could have a highlight of each.
I think we have a very loyal, grateful group of tenants that I think would be happy to, you know, share the good news about what they're doing in Riverbank. So I appreciate that, and we'll look to redouble our efforts and get them involved in that.
Because we have half the year gone, and we've spent $220 or whatever the number was dollars. And so we still have a pretty good, you could buy a lot of advertisement or a lot of inches in a periodical. Sorry, that was my point. In the electrical portion of it, spread loading, the costs throughout would probably start making sense as we start doing more and more of that. Instead of pinpointing it towards one particular who needed the upgrade, that electrical upgrade, in my opinion, is needed throughout that entire complex. And that although one specific is looking at it, it benefits all.
It is something that we feel we can recoup the costs of because with the expansion of our electrical system and the upgrades that we're making, we have tenants waiting in line to expand their space as soon as we can get them more power. So it is something that will pay for itself, and we'll feel a lot better because it's much safer.
We're incapacitated because of the electrical, you know, the deficiencies that we had, and we couldn't increase their electrical costs.
Well, your people you sent me out to see were so pleased with the electrical upgrades that they've only had one failure in the last 18 months. And that Hatchetchi is extremely pleased with that phenomenon. You can't just walk away. This is a public hearing. I open it to the public for any questions or comments. Come on, someone has to say, you know where fast pitch? You have to come up here and speak there, Mr. Jones.
Edward Jones. I live in a mobile home across from Brian's Market. I'm interested in the ammunition plant. There's a lot of money there. I know you're having trouble with military. Is there a possibility, not unknowing to me, there was a waiting list for people to get into the ammunition plant? I wasn't aware of that. Because what I was going to say is, is it possible to lower the rent in order to get more people into the plant? Now, you'll have to disregard that because the people waiting to get in, I guess that doesn't make any sense.
If we lowered the rent, sir, we'd be giving it away, and I tell you, that's not right.
Well, I thought just lower, just so people can get into it a lot easier and fill the place up.
We have it filled up, so...
You can come out for a tour.
So, oh, I'm feeling like something. Okay, thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Seeing or hearing none, I close public comment. I bring this back to the city council. They recommend, put my glasses on. Accept the second quarter revenue and expenditure report and adopt the resolution approving the midterm budget adjustments for the fiscal year 2014-15 in item 5.6.
I so move.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and second item 5.6 as I read.
Committee members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
New business, item 6.1. A resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California to waive the requested fees by the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce for the operation of the farmers' market.
Mayor members of the city council, this Chamber of Commerce has submitted...
I need two people to...
I apologize.
No eavesdropping.
Members of the city council, I'll just hand this over to Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick to present the request from the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce to have fees waived in relationship to the 2015 farmers' market.
Mayor members of the council, the Parks and Recreation Department has received a special event application from the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce to operate the farmers' market at the community center park again this summer. The market would begin May 27 and run through September 2. The hours of the market would be from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. On movie nights that occur in June and July, the event would conclude at 11:00 p.m. So I know that Garnett Martin, who is with the chamber and is the market manager, is here. If you have any questions throughout, and I know she's been working very hard on the farmers' market planning. The fee waiver request that we received within the packet was as follows. The community center fee rental, which we prorated, looking at, they only wanted to use the facility for an hour and a half. And that would have come out, looking at the number of weeks, to $1,300. The park aid fees, $270. And that's just having someone come out, lock the bathrooms, help with the garbage, and those type of things, lock up the building. Bounce house permit fee, they asked for us to waive, which would be $25. And the noise permit fee, they would still need to get the permits, but they're asking for the fee to be waived. So the total fee waiver request is $1,620. The recommendation that we have is if the fees are waived, is suggested that the waived fee amount be transferred from the general fund to the enterprise fund to cover the services as follows. The current fiscal year, $640, which would cover the services from May to June. And then for the next fiscal year budget, we would budget $980 to cover July through September. And we talked a lot about this when we talked about special events. We talked about the concern for the enterprise fund. And we talked about that if we do waive fees that weren't grandfathered in in the facility rental conversation is that we would transfer that money over so that we would not be operating at so much of a deficit in the enterprise fund. Any questions? I can go back to the slide too, so you can see what the fees are.
In an event like the farmers' market and on Wednesday night out, how the combination is, what? Why does the chamber believe that they can be waived for that group?
Would you like me to let...
Yes, please.
Okay. This is Garnett Martin, who is the market manager with the Chamber of Commerce.
Hi.
Hi. With anything, there are expenses on both sides. And we learned a lot last year. We had a lot of hiccups that were really burps. And in that, our goal is to make a community event that truly is for the community. We had issues where Oakdale had their farmers' market the same night we did, which hurt us when they started up. So this year, I have talked to them, they are moving theirs back to Thursday night. So we won't have that conflict. We know that to bring the people out, our events were well-attended when we had the kids' safety night, the movie nights, when we actually had a band who showed up and could play. Those are costs that the chamber is paying for. We're going to be having nine movies that we are paying for, which will be $1,800 alone. We also will be paying for a band, and we have budgeted to pay for those up to $150 per night. So we're going to have about, you know, $4,000 plus just for those two items that we will be, you know, putting money out. And as in anything, we ask that the city help participate in some of our costs. And the way you can participate is waive some of the fees that you would normally charge, which will help offset the money we put out. We did run the farmers' market in the black. We did not lose money last year, which I think is a huge plus considering all the issues that we did have with it. We've really worked hard to try to get the draw to the people. So with Riverbank schools starting so early in August, our back-to-school night, which we actually planned on the first day of school, which we didn't know, we're moving that further into July. We'll do the backpack fundraiser. And last year, the chamber purchased 100 of those backpacks. And then about 58 more were donated from the community, which we had a great turnout on that night also, which is a real need. This year, we plan on, you know, to get to everybody. The population in Riverbank does have a large Hispanic residency. So we hope to, one night a month, have a Hispanic band come to meet their needs so that they don't feel excluded. So we have a lot of things we're trying to change, a lot of money that we are putting out to make it successful. We don't want to give up on it. We want to keep it on the same night, the same hours, the same location. Where in the past, it's changed from day and time. So I think to help us be successful, to help the city be successful with a great community event, is share the costs. Did I answer your question? I kind of know I went around the block on that a little bit.
Yes and no. You're a nonprofit organization?
We are a nonprofit.
Still, for nonprofits, there's business license fees and special and seasonal event activities fees can be waived. But it should be, what is a... I'm a little concerned about waiving the fees. Can I speak with Sue? Can you get back up? How would this affect the city? I know that you were involved heavily in the projects last year, whether you wanted to be or not, to help make them successful. How is that going to affect you?
Well, really, they did the work. We were just there to assist as we could with the park and making sure that things were ready for them. I don't think it will affect our department other than just, you know, making sure that we still have the funding that we have to get through this year. And when we ask for funds in next year's budget, we want to make sure that that is included so that we're not at a deficit because we do work hard to try to keep the enterprise fund at a break-even or near that. The park aid fees are difficult because we're pulled in a lot of directions. And those fees are going to be going up, especially we're trying to handle the River Cove area and things like that. Those come out of the same pot of money that we are asking for these. I know 270 isn't much, but those are just the things. It's just, we want to know where that money is going. And if we do ask for more money, it's because there's more programs that are asking for our help.
No, we want to do, you know, start fixing up the community center. I, okay. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll chirp in here for just a second. I know we have set up fees for nonprofit organizations. And we took a long, hard look at that fee structure, I recall, agonizing over those. at, at that fee structure, I recall, agonizing over those, and feeling like we kind of struggled charging nonprofits to use our facilities too, and I think, I think you're hearing us struggle a little bit, because there's some bare minimums that are required to run our, run the facilities here. I'm wondering if you haven't contacted some of the, not, other nonprofit agencies or clubs, service clubs in the area, and requested these funds to them also. Might be another revenue source to kind of offset that, and if there are some, you know, matching grants with a couple of the nonprofit agencies that are out there to, and clubs, service clubs, is what I'm really trying to say, might be an avenue for this too.
But the item tonight is whether or not we waive the requested fees.
I could interject to your nonprofit question. We have contacted some of the other nonprofits, and, and with anything, we get the same answer. We're struggling also. They maybe might come have a booth or something. We do waive our, our booth fees, or make them very nominal for the nonprofits, so they can come and participate also. We are revamping, it's not going to be just the farmers market, it's going to be concerts in the park, family night out at the farmers market. So it is still a farmers market, but we're not stressing that. We live in an agricultural community, where most of the workers are either working on the farm, or have a family member that does. They're not going to come out to a farmers market to buy tomatoes. They're getting them from whoever. That is not the draw, and we realized that last year. So we're trying to really incorporate to make it more of a family night out. The plus side is, you can have dinner there with a food vendor, maybe pick up your tomatoes for your lasagna night the next night, and make that a featured bonus for them, but not, where last year, we tried to make the farmer part truly the concentrated part, but, and we reached out to, to everybody for assistance, because we did struggle a lot, and, you know, we're being told the same thing. We're struggling too. So unfortunately, we're getting a no back.
By changing the emphasis, you changed the complexity, and I can see where you're going with this now. Thank you. Okay, any further comments, questions? I open it up to the public to comment or provide input?
I'm Diane Talbert. I live in Riverbank, and I'm the Secretary Treasurer of Royal Neighbors, which most of you know. My question is, I attended the farmers market last year, and we've lost a lot of the vendors. You know, like rodents, used to be there every year, and we'd have, and I know what you're saying about going in.
They left when Oakdale opened their market. They all went.
Yeah, they did. So I'd like to know what you can do to bring them back, for one thing.
Well, we've also...
Okay, okay.
No, no, normally, when we have this, this isn't a discussion period.
I'm not asking, but I'm just...
I guess we'll do that.
Okay, well, I didn't mean to really, I guess it was just an over the head. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I spent months writing a grant with the Ecology Center for the EBT program. Along with that, we are the only city in all of Stanislaus County that has gone for this market match, and what that is, is someone who's on EBT, which is what they now call the food stamp program, if they want to purchase $5 in produce, we match that five. So now they have $10, and we won't know until April if we get that grant, but we are the only ones that applied for it, and that is going out to our farmers to let them know, this is an advantage that you have. None of your other markets have it. And, and unfortunately, with the federal funds, we won't know until April whether we get it, but we are gearing up as if we have gotten it, because the Ecology Center has done a very good job in helping us write that. So that's one of the pluses to try to get the, and the fact that we're not competing with Oakdale this year.
Well, I know that was a big problem, but the other question I had, which I probably am addressing the councils, that we do, we put on our veterans luncheon every year. It's a lot of money, and we graciously, we get support from the City Council, but we work real hard all year, putting on all kinds of fundraisers, and I always hear this about people with groups like yours, not faulting you, that are, with their monies issues, and I'm saying, where are your fundraisers? I mean, we start January 1st, and we work right up until the day before the, the veterans luncheon, and it's a free event. We don't charge them anything, and I just, that's what my question is. It seems like we work so hard, and I hear other, you know, people come up, and we've come to the council and asked for support, but we do the work.
Right, we, I mean, the Chamber is all volunteer, so, you know, we are all volunteering our time. We don't have a huge fund budget.
We are as well.
Exactly.
I mean, there's only, we, and I'm not going to argue, but there's, there's 15 of us, and we're all seasoned senior citizens. My suggestion is that maybe, you look like it's to help support some of the money by having fundraisers at Riverfest or something else like that, just to get some money up. I'm sorry, they're going to be, I don't want it to be an argument back and forth, it's just what my point is that there, you know, sometimes you get give back if you, if you do your part too.
And I think at Riverfest, we did have a booth out there. Last year, our market manager quit like the fourth week in, which left us really floundering. And so, like I said, there were a lot of issues last year. We're hoping to bypass that, but we're not, you know, and we're all working hard. Everybody that's on the board has a full-time job also.
Well, we'd like to see the, the, you know, the farmers market succeed, and like that, I'm not, I just, the points that I like to bring up too, for, you know, in considerations, that, that there's other means. Sorry.
That's okay. The Chamber's putting up capital for the entertainment portion of it?
Yes.
And the, the movies? And we'll have an event at each Wednesday?
The movies will be only the month of June and July, and then in August, we're working on some other things that we can draw the parents back out, because we're not going to be drawing the kids, because they're at school. So we're trying to make something so that everybody will want to come and continue to come. We think if we can have a fairly successful year with increasing the attendance, that it will just continue to grow, and as we grow with it, then, you know, we don't have to probably ask quite so much help.
And what is your definition of success for the Wednesday?
Well, would be the attendance, our farmers and our vendors that come are happy, they, they actually made money, they're not losing money every week by coming out there, because we didn't have the attendance, and we didn't have the live bands that, you know, went out and publications saying that we were going to have. You know, we, we got, sorry. We got egg on our face a lot last year, and we're trying to avoid that. We're starting much earlier, we're working on it. I go to a couple other committees that have other farmers market, which has helped, because you sit across the table from them, that's how I got to meet the Oakdale people, and, and we discussed, and they didn't have a problem moving the night. So I think that's a big plus. I hate to, to say we should scrap it, because I do feel it's a good thing to bring the community together and have a successful night out, and of course, you have to get something there to make them want to come.
Okay, thank you. I saw with that 1,600. That's a general fund impact?
It is, it is a general fund impact, yes.
All that has their new roof, right? So we don't have to worry about that.
Yes, the only funding source we would have available for that is our general fund impact, our general fund reserve, and currently, there still is a surplus, even after the appropriations made.
Okay, and the actual financial impact, we're waiving those fees, but the actual financial impact is?
640 for this year.
640, okay.
Yes, 640 for this year and 980 for the next year.
We've waived the funds previously? With the fees, okay.
Well... I'd like to see it succeed. So I, I'm, I'm looking for a motion, let's, let's make this a success.
I totally agree, I couldn't agree more. So I would like to make a motion that we approve item 6.1.
I'll second that motion.
We have motion to approve item 6.1 and a second.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Maybe more difficult next year, because we'll be at a big deficit, so the success is on your marketing, your attendance, your, your metrics, so please, come back next year saying, we want to pay you.
I'll come back and tell you we want to pay you back.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to comments, staff comments first?
Mayor, members of the City Council, let's, staff comments this evening will star Maricela Garcia, who is going to provide an overview of a number of upcoming meetings that the community will have an opportunity to participate in, to provide input on upcoming projects.
Just want to take this opportunity to invite all of our residents to a few meetings tomorrow night, February 25th, at 6 o'clock PM. That will be here at the City Council chambers. It is our Patterson Road Concept Plan Workshop. We'll be presenting some of the concepts we've had, discussing with the residents a few of the proposals, including the possible elimination of the parking along Patterson Road, and that would be between Roselle Avenue and Claus Road, in addition to also discussing some of the constraints that have led us to, to make some of these determinations. And so notices have gone out to all of the residents in that area, as well as the businesses, so that we can hopefully obtain their feedback as we move forward to a design. And always, we want to stress to them that these are currently just concept plans, we don't have a financing source yet for any of these projects, but we would like to solicit their feedback before we move to more specific design elements. On Thursday, February 26th, we have our first Budget Advisory Committee meeting. We'll be discussing the City Council, City Manager, and legal budgets at that point in time, so I do encourage all of our residents to attend, in order to learn a little bit more of where our general fund monies go to. And the third workshop I'd like to invite everyone to is the ADA Transition Plan Community Workshop. That one is March 4th at 6 o'clock PM at the Community Center. So the city's undergoing this update to our plan, and it will review all of our streets and roads and buildings with regards to ADA accessibility, and we would like feedback from our nonprofit groups and our residents with regards to areas they would like us to focus on as we begin to finish the plan and begin to prioritize some of the projects that will be included within that.
And Mayor members of the City Council, I'm going to put Chief Kylie on the spot. We had a, a very good conversation in the parking lot today about an activity that took place in terms of clearing the homeless from the, from the Riverbed, and so he provided a brief overview of that activity, and then he promised pictures at a future date.
As the City Manager expressed the importance of picture being worth a thousand words, which is tough to argue against. We have our quarterly river sweeps we've been conducting, that was again, part of our past strategic objective planning, and we conducted one today from Adams Gravel Plant Road West to about where the, where the landslide was, or no longer is, near U-Gas, Southern Street. We notified people about two weeks in advance that we'd be doing the sweeps, so the people that had illegal encampments set up, they were, they, they got plenty of prior notice, but there were, I would say, six individuals that we had to restate that, you know, what our purpose was, and that they had to leave, and, and they did so willingly, but, you know, with, with those sweeps, which we conduct in conjunction with Corps of Engineers, there's always a, a very large amount of trash that's left behind. You know, the illegal encampments, they, they, the homeless population tends to take what is of value or use to them with them when they vacate them, but there is a lot of waste left behind, whether it's human waste, you know, plastic tarps, and just, you know, a compilation of garbage from just living there for, you know, a week or two weeks. We also had about eight, eight, what we call hypes, or hypodermic syringes and needles that were, you know, had residual heroin in them, and so I just wanted to emphasize the importance of these sweeps, and not just from an environmental impact standpoint, but also from a public safety standpoint. If you have, you know, kids or residents that want to go down and access a river, they don't, they should not have to worry about being stuck with a needle that, you know, contains a, a contagious disease or the potential to contract it, so anyway, there's a lot of fallout that goes with it. We routinely emphasize these people contact 211, we hand out cards, and let them know that there are social services available, because we want to provide options for these folks too, and, and we get mixed results in terms of the willingness to go ahead and pursue those, those social services, but, but I just, I think it's important to let everybody know that we, we do make the effort to try to route people into those services, because if they truly want to change their lifestyle, there, there are options out there, so anyway.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. April 30th, we kick off the Stanislaus County, what is it? What's that? No, it's, it's, come on, you can help me. You're not going to help me, are you?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're speaking of. Are you speaking of?
For the homeless, for prevention of teen?
The homeless count? Oh, the prevention. Yes, Prevention 2015. And I, I believe that they moved that to October. It was initially going to be, so that's, that'll confirm.
There goes a whole year?
So I can confer, I can confirm that, to make sure that I heard that correctly. But that was, yes, it was initially scheduled for April, and then they, they moved it, as far as I understand, but I will double check on that, Mayor.
Thank you. I was going to ask, what is your participation going to be? Now I think you have a reprieve.
Nice to know, thank you.
And, and in addition, there've been a number of questions from some of you, as well as members of the public, in regard to the status of the, the liquor store and buildings that burned down at the corner of, of Third Street in Atchison. And so essentially, they are dealing with the insurance issues that go along with the business, the businesses themselves, as well as the property and the, the structures. It is, we've been given the, the property owner a lot of leeway, because he was a victim of a fire, and to, to, to make it, you know, that much more difficult on, on this individual, you know, we've been trying to be very respectful of, of the situation that he found him in, it no fault of his own. So with that respect, we do want to let the public know that they are working diligently to, to get that resolved, so they can clear the site. We do not, at this point, know what their plans are for rebuilding, or if they plan to rebuild. Our understanding at this point is, is it's very questionable whether there will, we will rebuild in the short term, but that always is subject to change based on conditions. So, but I do know that it is an eyesore, it is unfortunate that that corner, it looks the way that it does at the current time. There are, there's, the state is in control of the Del Rio, and in this case, it's a private property matter that was subject to a fire. And, and that concludes staff's comments. I just would like to thank, though, the Mayor for the state of the city, and...
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yeah, I just had a couple things this evening. I just wanted to thank Maricela, and Debbie, and Melissa for making what sometimes looks like something very complicated on paper with budgets and numbers, to make it very understandable and, and, and a great presentation. So thank you for making those easy. So thank you for making those easy for us to understand. I appreciate that. I've had a lot of comment from folks in the last few weeks, kind of leading up to district elections and the mapping stuff. And I was really happy to see that the maps were out on display at the State of the City and people were taking a look at those. I also shared with another group that I found a really interesting article, and I gave the website to our city manager. It was just a really interesting article about what another city did. Santa Barbara also referenced Modesto and what was going on. It just kind of took a different view on it, and it was really good information. And I'd just like to encourage the public out there to take time to come and take a look at the maps and educate yourself. And if you have questions, ask all of us sitting up here and the city staff, you know, about what's going on and really be informed with this. You guys are the ones that it's going to affect when it comes to voting and your representation. So I encourage you to be educated on what's going on. And please, feel free to call and ask, email, and get some information on those. The last thing, I just wanted to thank the mayor for an awesome State of the City address. There was a lot of really good information and made me feel really proud to be part of the city and live here and be part of this council, that we're doing some really good things here, and be proud that I live in Riverbank. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
First off, I'd like to thank the staff for the great presentations they gave and the time they put in it tonight and at many of our council meetings. Likewise, the rest of the staff that isn't involved in that, I get around the town a lot, and I always see a lot of our staff members and employees working very hard around the town. I'm very appreciative of that, and as is all the council members. And then, reporting back to the mayor, the Lower Stanislaus River Committee, I've set up an appointment with Heather Wright, in charge of the Corps up in Knights Ferry. And we're going to meet on April 1st to discuss some things. And I'm inviting people from Ripon and also from Oakdale to this. I've informed the Oakdale people already if they would like to go, and we'll see what happens from that. But one of the things I'd like to achieve is for us to maybe come up with one common thing that we can possibly realistically start working on as a committee, rather than just talking. So we'll see how that goes. Last but not least, this year is our 40th anniversary for my wife and myself, and I am going to miss the next two council meetings, because we are going back to New Orleans and we are taking a Mississippi Riverboat cruise. And the dates just sort of fell to do... The best time to do it was at that time. But I told Jill that I am in... We'll stay in contact with email and via phone and whatnot, and I will be available. Thank you.
Been married 40 years?
Yeah.
And I don't think I took a day off. Don't tell my workers. Councilmember Tucker, please.
Well, I want to thank the previous two council members for totally stepping on my thunder here. But as always, I want to thank and appreciate our wonderful staff, the fantastic reports and presentations tonight. And I agree, those of you who presented numbers to us, those are not difficult... Those are not easy for those of us who don't work with numbers every single day to understand. And so we really appreciate the way you lay everything out so well for us. Thank you, and thank you to all the city staff. I agree with Councilmember Campbell. The staff's incredible, the response times, no matter what we ask of them, you know, they're right there. So we're so fortunate in Riverbank to have such a wonderful, wonderful city staff and the city manager who leads those folks. It's her leadership, I'm sure, that helps with that. So I want to thank the city. And a great activity guide. I'm really excited about the things coming up this summer. I think this is beautiful, just fantastic. And every year, you, you know, you exceed the expectations for the following years. Incredible job. And echoing what Councilmember Jones Cruz said, I really would like to encourage all of our residents to provide input to us on the district maps. I know for me, speaking personally for me only, and I'm sure everybody else probably feels the same way, but speaking for me only, it's not about being reelected, you know, it's not about, you know, several of us being from the same area or whatnot. Please provide input on where these maps need to be drawn. We want your input, your input. Thank you so much in advance for that, your cooperation and assistance with that. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Okay, so ditto about the State of the City address. And a special thank you to all city staff, and especially Norma. Ditto about the Town Hall Workshop regarding district elections, and I want to give the date, because no one else did, and that's March 14th at 10:00 AM, which is a Saturday. And ditto about, a lot of work was being... Has been done to update us on our budgets for the city and the LRA, and another job well done. So thank you very much. And just encouraging people to sign up for the Nextdoor program, because I think that it's going to promote citywide information sharing, and it'll help us to stay informed and provide a valuable link for our neighborhood. So I think that's a good program. I think we should really get involved and support it. So thank you.
I think someone from Blessing Court will be signing up before midnight. I do want to thank personally Norma for her efforts and her assistance in the State of the City, although it wasn't as extensive in the past years. It was very productive, and I didn't get to see all the slot. In fact, none of the ones that were behind me. I heard they were pretty good.
They were.
At the Riverbank Industrial Complex, I am still concerned about the lack of movement from the Army, even after personal visit. I want to step it up. I want to step it up with our staff first before I call in outside help. I don't think we need the outside help first, but we need to get moving. Some of the businesses, as we went around, they're concerned about what's going to happen, what is the actual outcome of it, whether we either bring in some outside assistance for developing the site, or, you know, if we ever can move forward. And that was stated as I was walking around with denim staff unaccompanied. I'm concerned that the BRAC office has not returned a call, calls. They have not provided what they stated they would. I also want to commend the Planning Commission. I believe you spoke about it, Councilmember Jones Cruz. The Planning Commission or commissioners have been doing extremely good work and a lot of their diligence. There's a lot of discussions, which we don't hold, that they hold. Please review their tapes or attend one of their meetings. There's other items coming on up that will seem restrictive to citizens, but you take a look at the health of the city, the health of age groups that it may be affecting, and how our responsibilities are not for approving businesses, but for the health of the city. And those will be coming down. And again, to the city manager, thank you for the last couple of weeks in helping me with the State of the City. She did some editing, cutting out comments she didn't think were appropriate.
It was a pleasure to work with you, Mayor.
With that, we go to item 8, closed session. With item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code 54956.9, two potential cases. Item 8.2, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code 54957.6, agency representative Jill Anderson, city manager, employee organization Riverbank Miscellaneous Groups. Before we go into closed session, is there anyone from the public wishing to make a comment on items 8.1 and 8.2? Seeing none, we go into closed session. Thank you.
Did he announce the LRA? Oh, Mayor?
Where? Wait a minute, don't believe any word. Oh, I'm sorry. LRA item 8.3, I closed the city court one, not the LRA one. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code 54956.9, one potential case. With that, now we do go into closed session. We reconvene from closed session on item 9.1. Report on closed session 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two potential cases. We provided direction to staff. On item 9.2, report on closed session on item 8.2, conference with labor negotiators, we provided direction to staff. LRA item 9.3, report on closed session, item LRA 8.3, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one potential case. We provided direction to staff. With that, we conclude the meeting.
Thank you, council.
I was going to use "secure" the meeting.